Welcome our few guests and I hope people are watching at home or will watch it at some point. It's great to have that option. It's good to be back in the boardroom. I think Ryan and I had a meeting in here with Dr. Miller a couple of weeks ago and I think we were almost giddy at getting back in here. We're trying to get things as normal as possible. Can I have an adoption of the agenda, please?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
All right. Are there any questions? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. We will move into 2.01, the superintendent's report. Dr. Miller.
Thank you, President Don. I wanted to start my comments this evening by sharing to those of you who anticipated that we would consider plans for virtual graduations tonight, that we have pulled that item off the agenda in order to wait further guidance from the Jackson County Health Department on mass gatherings. We will continue to share information about our tentative in-person graduations in July as promptly as we can. Congratulations to Board members Kim Fritchy and Judy Hedrick, who received advanced Board Member Certification from the Missouri School Boards Association. Recognition also goes to Ryan Murdock, who received advanced and master Board Member Certification. I'd like to extend a big congratulations to Longview Farm Elementary Music Teacher Matthew Kederman, who earned recognition as LSR VII's Teacher of the Year last week. Mr. Kederman's zeal for teaching and his love for music has made him a recognizable and revered asset in LSR VII, and we are so pleased that he will be representing our district this year. Typically, in my superintendent's report, I highlight students and staff who have achieved notable success and have made our district proud. As this unexpected school year draws to a close, I take stock in where we started the year and where we are now. I want to instead extend my heartfelt gratitude to every single student in our district, as well as our families. You have made me so proud to be a member of LSR VII. Your perseverance and drive to navigate something new and difficult was inspiring, and we feel immensely appreciative for your patience in supporting the spring. To our staff, who took on the responsibility of serving kids in unfamiliar environments and in uncharted waters with grace and courage, thank you. You took on so much to make virtual learning a possibility for kids who needed it, all while balancing your own challenges and needs. We cannot thank you enough for your efforts this spring. In regards to facilities, support, instructional resources. The June 2, 2020 municipal election is less than two weeks away, and Lee Summit R7 schools have two critical items on the ballot that will profoundly impact the future of our students and staff. First is the consideration of which three candidates will serve on the Board of Education and support and guide the district's mission of supporting successful students. Second is the district's no tax rate increase bond issue, which would fund critical improvements, construction projects, and upgrades that would not just allow us to make school improvements safer and up-to-date, but provide innovative learning environments for our staff and students to thrive in. We have shared with our community the positive impacts we believe these projects will have for our students and staff, not just from a facility standpoint, but from an instructional one. You can learn more about these projects at lsr7.org/bond. But it's also important to note that the physical quality of our schools greatly impacts the community by contributing to its reputation and maintaining property values. At a time when there is so much uncertain, we know that our projects will support jobs and boost our local economy. We encourage all of our patrons to participate in the voting process and lend their voice to the consideration of these two very important ballot items. In the area of governance. The Missouri Legislative Session concluded last week. Several education bills that would have had a chilling impact on public education by diverting funds to charter schools or limiting the ability for local school leaders to make decisions about what's best for their school district did not survive the session. And then moving on, I want to thank you to all of our LSR VII supporters who called their elected officials and advocated for bills that support public education. If the pandemic has reinforced anything, it is the critical role that education plays in every aspect of a child's life, from how he or she engages with learning to how often he or she gets to eat. While supporting schools is more important than ever, we are beginning to understand and communicating with state officials that financial and budget challenges are in LSR VII's future. The LSR VII has strong reserves as a result of smart, strategic, budget planning, and we believe that we are poised to weather financial adversity. However, we know that the economic fallout prompted by COVID-19 will continue to be present, present challenges for our state and for our school district. This spring, we embraced open and clear communication as we prioritized the needs of students and staff and navigated both instructional and operational challenges. We will continue that spirit of transparency as we navigate new challenges. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. All right, we are moving on to 3.01. We do have three recognitions, and I believe Jackie will do our first recognition.
Yes, that's correct. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. The R7 Board of Education expresses its appreciation to our physical education teachers and coaches and is grateful for the work they do to ensure that our students are healthy and active today and throughout their lives. Thank you for all you do.
Great. Yes, we're going to give them a clap. All right, we are moving on to 3.02.
The R7 Board of Education expresses its appreciation to our outstanding teachers with sincere thanks for their positive impact on our students. During National Teacher Appreciation Week, celebrated in May 4 through the 8th, we joined our entire community in celebrating our educators' valuable impact on our district's children and our future. And I might just add that, as I tuned in to watch the Teacher of the Year, I was, I really needed the uplift, the enthusiasm and positive nature of all of our staff through that. In addition, as I've driven around the district this week, seeing our staff out handing out the kids their supplies and materials that were left in the buildings, everybody's been so positive, enthusiastic. So, I really do appreciate all of our staff, as I know the rest of the board does as well.
Dennis?
Thank you. It's my honor to be able to acknowledge and shout out to the school nurses. The R7 Board of Education is grateful to our valuable R7 Health Services Department, staff members, and appreciate their commitment to supporting the health and well-being of each student. National School Nurses Day was celebrated on May 6th this year, and they did an outstanding job. So again, thank you for all your great work.
That was fitting that Dennis got to do the nurses, since he may have one around that he hangs out with.
Forty-eight years hanging out.
Forty-eight years hanging out. All right. And we did ask for public comment, and we did not have any, is that correct, Linda? Okay. Thank you for doing that extra work on that. All right, we will move down to 5.01, our board reports and meeting attended. Board members, please take note that, you know, this is about the committees and the boards that you serve on, so can you give us an update? And we're going to start with Mr. Allen.
I'll start, of course, they resume meetings, which is fine, but the most fulfilling and overwhelming to a large degree was Teacher of the Year. And more than just a committee, it's a good, strong commitment by a number of people who are very diverse in and among themselves, from business owners to retirees, former teachers, current principals. Laura Maxwell does a great job in moderating an entire process and navigating that process, does not vote, does not turn a conversation, just presents the information and material. And of course, Matt, as we've heard, Matthew Kederman, music teacher from Lee Summit, or Lee Summit, Longview Farm Elementary, was the one receiving the recognition, and as he stated, it is really any of the 12 or any of the dozens of teachers who were nominated. Pouring through the information was humbling, and the interviews, all done by Zoom, so we were at that for about seven hours in one day, eight hours in one day, was terrific. And I will editorialize a bit because one of the things that the teachers, educators, every single one said that they really missed in this difficult, difficult time was the relationships that they develop with their students, and their peers naturally, but their students. And they really missed the opportunity to cultivate and foster the relationships that they have with their students and to a person that came up every single time, as well as the essential part of teaching in recognizing the non-verbal. Curriculum is one thing, but the non-verbal in emotional and social development and the way that they can help cultivate that is something that this distance is tough to navigate. Computers are great, virtual learning is great and successful, and our educators and staff did a wonderful job. But in hearing those, and I'm almost in tears hearing them say it, but that was something that they sorely missed and really want to get back into from the get-go. So, it was great, and the 12 recognized and the three above that were just fantastic folks, and genuinely proud for each other. That's also what really shined, was the fact that when he was, it could have been anybody, recognized and awarded, but everybody cheered, I mean, and yeah, so. And Chamber of Government Relations was a Zoom meeting. It was discussions around, I'll let you expand on that because you're the person there, but good discussion, good thorough vetted information, and then a chamber chat, and I don't know that that was brought up necessarily, but I thought that went very, very well. And really, I wrote down a few people that spoke in that, and it was moderated by Taylor, right, Smith, from the chamber. Dr. Miller, Dr. Andrews, Dr. Kepphart, Katie Bergen, I think, yeah, I know I'm missing somebody, but everyone who spoke just did a fantastic job. And it was Zoom, early, navigating through that, I just thought spoke very, very well as to what they were attacking, maybe that's a little strong, but what they were tasked with and how well that was going. So just thank you for everybody that was on that chamber chat, because I think that went very, very well. So, thanks.
I would concur with Mike on that. Excellent job from our district administrators on the chamber chat. Also, from the Lee Summit Chamber of Commerce, at the, it was a Zoom meeting, as you said, Government Relations was, we received information from our city administrator, Steve Arbo, and the assistant administrator, Mark Downing, regarding the proposed use tax that will be on the June ballot for the city of Lee Summit. It concerns online purchases our residents make from companies like Amazon. And they reiterated that our city is not receiving its fair share of tax revenue because of the out-of-state companies not collecting appropriate city taxes on purchases. And Mr. Arbo let us know that the impact this is having on our city in terms of helping to pay for essential services like fire police, et cetera, and funding street repairs and things like that. So, that's why they are hoping that folks will get out and vote on June 2nd for that issue. The other report I have is great news from Lee Summit Educational Foundation. If you could find a great way to reward our teachers who applied for peak grants, Cheryl Frankie and the foundation crew found it, and basically it was a caravan of cars driving school to school to school, every single school. We did it in, oh, faster than we thought we could, but anyway, and I was in that caravan, but we went from school to school and held up their checks, and they videotaped us, and they produced a fun video to announce to all the teachers who received peak grants. They awarded $66,000 worth of peak grants to nearly every school in the district. And if you would like to see that Peak Patrol video, and you did not get to see that, you can see it on the foundation's webpage or the Lee Summit Educational Foundation Facebook page. And it is a lot of fun, so just have fun going to watch that. In addition to that, the foundation also helped award over $77,500 worth of scholarships to our graduating seniors who plan to attend a university or trade school. And so, that's always a big job in the spring, is having those scholarship applications read and awarding those scholarships. And yeah, it's a little disappointing not to be able to hand those scholarships to those students in their academic achievement award ceremonies at each of the high schools like we normally do, but you know, the students will be receiving those scholarships, and we're really happy for them. So congratulations to all of our students and our teacher recipients this year. Thank you.
That's awesome, Kim. Dennis?
Really, we had a CAC Steering Committee meeting. It's hard to Zoom a couple of weeks ago just to update and to touch base as we work through the upcoming bond issue. Ryan will be reporting here. Yesterday, we had our finance meeting, and Ryan will be reporting on that here in just a little while. Other than that, it's been kind of quiet.
Thank you. Judy?
I do not have a report this month, thank you.
Thank you. Jackie?
Thank you. I assume I am at a good level?
Yes.
Thank you, Linda. Well, it's amazing how much you can accomplish while you're sheltering at home during a pandemic. I'm sure you all agree that we hope our patrons and kids and all of our teachers and staff remain healthy and safe. I want to say that I thought it was great that we had a moment of silence to remember Manny. I would note that I am wearing my tiger colors in his memory and have good memories of my time with him and non-Western history. So I felt like we've had two great history teachers that have served on our Board of Education. We also need to remember that last month, after our last board meeting, we need to remember our administrative professionals, whose special day was after that board meeting. And of course, here, a special thanks to Board Secretary Linda Ismer. There are none finer than she is for all of us and the great help she's always provided. In addition to my regular assignments, I am following federal, state, county, and local governments in COVID-related decision-making and offered insights where possible as a board member. Interestingly, I've had the opportunity to review the HEROES Act, which passed the U.S. House last week. It's 1,815 pages long and has a 90-page summary. It will send me to the eye doctor soon. And of course, today, we also have a new version of the latest bipartisan U.S. Senate payroll protection program, so I haven't had a chance to look at that quite yet. Our elected officials are working very hard, and they're hosting daily briefings, and sometimes those briefings signal developments that are upcoming. And the most concerning this week was the news that the withholdings are expected from Missouri's pre-K to 12 budget. The good news here, and I think that Dr. Miller reflected this, is that we do have a healthy reserve for the district and a significant property tax base. And there were a number of weekly diversity roundtables that I was invited to, and they even had an international audience with the Zoom function, it's pretty great, and we got, we're able to learn what other districts are doing throughout the country to bring their struggling students back weeks early to engage in enrichment activities and studies and receive one-on-one assistance to minimize the effects of the serious combined spring-summer slide. There is widespread concern about children who are obviously at risk for abuse, neglect, and other physical and mental health challenges. Of course, it's my hope, and I'm sure you all agree, that the district will perhaps seek a waiver to get the kids safely back into learning and growing here in the coming weeks. The Insurance and Benefits Committee met in late April and was in attendance virtually again. It's probably a good time to remind everybody that participate in these programs, that we can expect healthcare costs to continue to rise. I've also continued to express concerns about the cost of the so-called middlemen in the process, which in our case is C-Biz, and we've had some conversation previously about that in board meetings. There's really no value added to employees in that part of the process, and when we control benefits costs, we do have more latitude as a board for raises and other benefits, or at least we don't devalue the raise to pay for the benefits for our covered individuals. And we probably need to do more to explore those other options. And of course, we mentioned the bond issue, and I've been delighted to work with others trying to promote the June 2nd bond issue, and also watching the Thursday Facebook Live presentations. You can find those on our district Facebook page if you can't watch in the middle of the business day. And on Saturday, March 21st, I was supposed to be representing the district along with my family in attendance at the Missouri Association of Student Council's annual state convention, where its leaders were scheduled, again, the word scheduled, but not able to present a distinguished student leader award to Lee Summit North senior Ethan Fields, who is the school student council secretary for the 2019-2020 school year. He is the only Lee Summit R7 school district student to receive this award. And if you don't recognize his name, he does happen to be my godson and nephew. This honor is presented only to seniors who meet the standards of the program's core purposes and mission of student council. It reflects students' mastery of leadership skills, community service, scholarship activities, and knowledge. Prior to receiving the recognition, Ethan has served as student council rep during his freshman, sophomore, and junior years. And of course, congratulations for him to bring this honor to our district, Lee Summit North, your school leaders and advisors, your student council peers, and of course, your personal achievement. And I hope that you all will join me in wishing him good luck at Kansas State as he begins his studies in architecture, and I love him very much. Finally, to all the families who seniors are taking the next step in volunteering for the armed services, normally, I like to kick off a standing ovation to you all at graduation. If you cannot join us in July for the hoped-for delayed graduation because your service has begun, please know that there are so many of us who admire your commitment and wish you a safe and successful career defending our nation. God bless each and every one of you. That's my report.
All right. Mike, I mean, Ryan, what is your name? Sorry.
Thank you. I also attended the Insurance and Benefits Committee meeting along with Jackie, and there were a lot of good questions asked during that particular meeting, so I do look forward to the follow-up as we try to negotiate on behalf of our staff to try to keep those health costs as low as possible. And then also as a part of the Finance Committee, which I will give a report for here in just a second.
Great. All right. I want to talk about Lee Summit Cares. As you know, stay-at-home orders have been stressful and adjust to the unknown of the pandemic. Lee Summit Cares is offering free weekly online parenting classes. Some of them are called "flattening the stress curve," "motivating your kids," and "new normal, helping families adjust to change." So those were all great ideas, and so tune in to leesummitcares.org and you can follow them. And then I, as I mentioned last month, we had to cancel our major fundraiser, Got Talent. We instead will be asking community members to support the organization through a crowdfunding program. This will be live June 9th, and if you follow Lee Summit Cares on social media and go to their website, you can see all that they have to offer. And then Team Lee Summit, we haven't had a meeting since the last, we did have a Zoom meeting, but I think that was before. That's really sad that I can't remember that. But we are going to start off early on the week of August 10th, working through some very important issues, so I wanted to let everyone know that. And that is my report. I did have Linda on here because I did want to, yeah, she gets all shy, but if there isn't a better administrative assistant, there really isn't one, so. She caters to all of us, so keeps us all in line, which we all know is hard. We are going to now move on to items 6.01 through 6.03, and I think Ryan will have.
I do have the Finance Report for tonight, and for my fellow board members, I'm sorry. So we did have a lot of issues in the Finance Committee that we went over. So first, the transfer of funds. A transfer of $3,197,426.72 is needed from the general fund to the special revenue fund to cover expenses for the month. Our investments through April total approximately $137.3 million. The revenue and expense report, our expense percentages are within expected budget parameters, and the current fund balance for April is 40.36%. Under facilities, the Facility Use Quality Focus Team met to review policies and processes for the fair utilization of school district facilities by all parties concerned and to evaluate the current facility use fee schedule. In addition to the standard district fee schedule, the team also reviewed the Aquatic Center and the Missouri Innovation Campus fee schedules. At this time, the team recommends no increase in fees for the fiscal year 2021. The Woodland Elementary Sewer Project Change Order Number One. I'm ready for this to be done, Kyle. I'm just ready for it to be done. This change order involves two items. The first item is related to the cost of connecting the pump station to the building's electrical service, and the other item is related to connecting the pump station to our existing HVAC building automation system. After reviewing the equipment submittals from the contractor, a straight network connection was not an option. The revised communication method will provide the ability to monitor the system and remotely receive alarms. Also included is a credit for costs included in the original contract. The Pro-Electrics Fire Alarm at Pleasantly Elementary. Pro-Electric is being recommended to replace the fire alarm system at Pleasantly Elementary, which is original to the school, 1965. Dennis and I can't believe that, but apparently it's true. In past years, we've had numerous repairs on the system. This system rated very high for replacement per our facility's Low Voltage Electrical Systems Assessment spreadsheet. The Heartland Electrical Intercom at Richardson Elementary. Heartland Electronics is being recommended to replace the intercom system at Richardson Elementary, which is also original to the school in 1995. With the age of the system, parts are increasingly hard to find, and failures are becoming more and more frequent. In the past year, we've had numerous repairs on the system. This system rated high for replacement per our facility's Low Voltage Electrical Systems Assessment spreadsheet as well. Professional Turf Products Mower Purchase. The Facilities and Grounds Department has two Toro large-area mowers used at all district sites. The oldest large-area mower is a 2007 model. This mower is at life expectancy for this type of equipment and needs to be replaced. Professional Turf Products LP has provided us a proposal for the replacement of this mower through the Omnia Partners Cooperative Purchasing Group. Construction and Maintenance Update. The Finance Committee reviewed the updates on the following projects of the Woodland Sewer Improvements, the Westview Roof Improvements, district-wide roofing improvements, the Lee Summit retaining wall improvements, and planning for future projects. Couple of other quick things. Qualtrics Renewal. The Qualtrics survey platform was utilized for Team Lee Summit in the 2019-20 year for its employee engagement survey. The completion rate increased to 51% this year over the previous year when it was just 31%. The survey distribution is provided by mobile device or desktop, which the team felt increased the response rate. It's being recommended to renew Qualtrics for the Team Lee Summit survey with expanded survey options, including student and parent survey options for the 2020-2021 school year. The Caring School Community Pilot Program. In support of well-being, focus on the instruct, and of the instructional compass, the Caring School Community Program and evidence-based social and social and emotional learning program, is being recommended for a seven elementary school pilot program for the 2020-21 school year. A leadership planning session, initial training, and ongoing professional development will be included throughout the school year. KnowledgeWorks. Professional development and consultation from KnowledgeWorks is being recommended for instructional leaders at Summit Technology Academy, Summit Ridge Academy, as well as R7 instructional leaders to increase the capacity to deliver more personalized learning. This is a three-year plan to help leaders gain the comprehensive instructional capacity to more effectively implement instructional practices. Cinematic Visions. Do we still want to go over that point, since we removed that from the agenda?
I think you can discuss it.
Okay. So the Cinematic Visions, during the Finance Committee, we did discuss that in-person graduations are still planned for July 25th, but building administration feel that it's important that we at least are planning for the possibility that we may not be able to gather in the numbers desired for a normal graduation ceremony. In the event that health officials will not allow us to gather, we want to be prepared with a professionally-created virtual graduation program. In the event of cancellation of the in-person graduation, the videos would be livestreamed, and each student would receive a digital copy of the virtual graduation, and that's something that we can continue to plan for in the future. Empathia Employee Assistance Program. The current agreement for the Employee Assistance Program, or EAP Services with Empathia, also known as Life Matters, will expire on June 30th, 2020. The R7 Administrative Team, together with CBIZ, completed a request for proposal process for an EAP provider, as is required every three years. Three providers submitted proposals by the deadline, and following an in-depth team conversation, the team unanimously agreed to recommend Empathia. And just for board members' note, it had a much higher usage rate this past year, too, which was really, really good. Meal Prices for 2020-2021 School Year. Annually, Nutrition Services evaluates the pricing for the school breakfast and lunch program to ensure compliance with federal regulations. With the Nutrition Services Program being funded by local and federal dollars, we must comply with the paid lunch equity requirement per the meal equity calculator. The total price increase for 2019-20 was 21 cents. We increased by 10 cents for 2019-20, and the remaining increase is now being carried forward to the 2020-2021 school year. We made it. Two actions here that we need to do tonight. 6.02 to approve the transfer of $3,197,426.72 from the general fund to the special revenue fund.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right.
And 6.03 to approve the Treasurer's Report and Payment of the Bills.
All right. Is it Mike?
Clarification, Mr. Murdoch. So the remaining increase being carried forward, so another 10-cent increase or a level 10, so there's no increase in meals next year, or another increase of 10?
Another increase of 10 cents, yes. And they did even note on the call that we probably would be in, that it would probably have to happen again one more year to stay in compliance with the regulation, with federal regulations.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. Thank you, Ryan, and Dennis. We will move on to item 7.01, the Consent Agenda, through 7.10.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda items as presented.
Okay, we have, she has a question. Okay, Jackie.
Thank you. Thank you. I just have two comments, no objections, but just for, we need to be mindful on 7.07, the facilities fees. I'm not disagreeing with the rates, but you know, some of those dollars obviously are a revenue source, and unfortunately with COVID, we are limited in our ability to fulfill some of those kinds of event opportunities. So that line item is going to probably be affected definitely in the current school budget year and possibly into the next school budget year. So just a note of caution there. And then on the meal prices, I'm really hoping that the current spike in prices of food generally don't harm this early and good work. I know that the, and we all know, that the nutrition group works very hard all of the time to secure the best prices and uses our great storage capacity to get items early. So I just wanted to note those on these two particular consent items.
All right. Ryan?
I just had one question, and I suppose it could be posed to Dr. Miller on 7.06 on summer school. What kind of communication will we be doing for patrons to keep them updated on the planning process notifications and all that kind of stuff as we lead up to that new deadline, especially for the elementary school kids?
Sure. And I might call on Dr. Kephart in a second. So we are still currently in our reopening phase of planning, and we're continuing to take guidance from Jackson County Health Department. And so again, you know, we're still going to be bound to when they allow schools to reopen, which could potentially impact summer school. But I'm actually going to turn over to Dr. Kephart. She's got a team that's assembled to really kind of talk through what those next phases for reopening looks like, as well as that process for communication.
Okay. I'm not quite sure that I have a whole lot to add except for that. So all of the department chairs right now and department heads, we have Kyle and Lori and Keith and a whole crew that right now are looking at specifics of elementary summer school. We have our summer school principals. We have been talking about instruction with Steve Campbell. And then we also have all of our summer school principals next week that we'll be getting together to also go through that list of instruction. We're looking at capping enrollment in classes less than we have before, and continuing to communicate that to families. We know that June 15th deadline is the deadline when families will either hear what course they are in, or that they will hear that we have canceled if there is state and local guidelines that would tell us that we would need to. So yes, much more to come. We were waiting to end the school year and then add that communication to families and to our staff.
And so just one quick follow-up then. If for some reason, summer school in person for those elementary kids was canceled, is there any kind of programming that would be offered to those kids to try to complete through the summer, even in a virtual format? And kind of a second and unrelated question, so sorry, is how will we follow up then with our special education students through the summer? I know that it's listed here that we're still going to try to be providing those services, but if there's still some kind of limit to what we can do from an in-person perspective, how are we trying to navigate that?
Sure. I'll answer both of those. The first one, we knew that there was a possibility of not having summer school early on. So we did communicate with our families. When we communicated about the change in summer school, we communicated with our families that because our students have Chromebook access, our students first through incoming, so incoming first through incoming sixth, we actually have teachers that will be, every two weeks, they will be providing activities for all of our students. They will be focused on math, ELA, and science, with some social studies and activities in there as well, art, music, PE. And those would be ones that any family could access. We think that it will be on the website. We have more information coming on that. We're going to start mid-June and run that through the 1st of August. So again, every two weeks will be two weeks of lessons, activities. It won't be a back-and-forth with families like virtual learning is right now, but it will be activities that, or back-and-forth with teachers like it is right now, but it will be activities that families could do with their children. And then you asked about special ed. Sorry, didn't want to leave that question. So special ed, Dr. Mathis and her team are working with every family that qualifies for ESY, and asking them which way of service would be most beneficial for them, and talking through that as a family. And then we'll make that decision if we do or don't have summer school, how to provide some services. We've been doing that in a virtual environment, so that will continue for some of our families.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay, we'll go to Kim and then Jackie.
All right. My question, I submitted a question in writing earlier, but it has to do with the Woodland Elementary Sewer Project Change Order. And I think we have been hearing about this project for probably a year and a half. But this, now we have a change order on this project after all this time. And you know, my question was, had, did we, why did we not know this was going to be needed when they quoted the project? This is a $12,130 change order, so in addition. So just, could we get an explanation as to why these changes are necessary and why this change order is necessary at this time?
Thank you. Yes, the change order primarily has two items on it. And the first one, the largest piece, is dealing with connecting power to the pump station. And that was around $10,000 of the change order. And that would have been an expense that would have been a part of the project anyway. We initially had planned on connecting to a transformer that Evergy has on our south property line. And so after talking with Evergy, the cost to connect to that transformer was going to be about $10,000. And so we looked at another option of connecting to the building, because if we had another transformer, then we have another meter, and then we're paying meter fees every month for the rest of time. And so in the long run, by taking that $10,000 instead of paying Evergy, we pay the contractor to connect to our building, and we avoid the meter fees. And the delay in the time on the change order, that was largely due, there was some of it due to some jurisdictional approvals that were just kind of unanticipated. We jumped through a lot of hoops with many different public entities on that project. And we also had an unforeseen delivery issue with the equipment that controls the pumps. And also there's a, if you can believe this, there's a deodorizing-type unit that gets added to it, so.
I can understand that, because my first year on the board, three years ago, I visited Woodland Elementary, and there was a definite smell in that common area, in between those classrooms in the back. So I think that deodorizing process is probably very necessary.
It will be necessary.
There you go. Okay.
Does that answer your question? Is that okay? Thank you.
Great. Jackie? Take your time. Remember Clark? Did you have a question?
Thank you. Yes, I did. And if I could, it was just a follow-up to the information that Dr. Kephart was sharing regarding summer school.
She's available.
Yes.
Yes, I'm watching.
Okay.
And the question just is pretty simple. I know you all are working with the local health officials, that sort of thing. And you're probably, just so people have kind of a point of reference, you guys are probably working through the CDC guidelines and making some of your decisions about how to organize summer school?
Yes, that is correct. Not just the CDC guidelines, but each of the different departments are working through guidelines coming from their specific areas as well.
Thank you.
I will also clarify that the date for Great Beginning Summer School says May 29th. They will be beginning with elementary on June 29th. So we will make that change in the document as well. So I apologize for that and appreciate the correction.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion in a second. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. We will move down to 9.01, Items for Decision, Contracts Over $5,000.
I move that the board approve new contracts over $5,000 as presented in Consent Agenda Items 9.02 through 9.19.
All right. Do we have any questions? Jackie?
Again, much like the seven series, just a few thoughts. The 9.02, the AVID program, which is the college readiness program for B, C, and even D students, as it was characterized. In the report and follow-up questions from the board regarding the program, we were only able to look at data for participation for the 1819 school year. And tonight, as you know, we're essentially on the eve of a school officially ending, I think it'd be great to see the data that we are collecting on the current school year, and look forward to seeing that in the future. But you know, are we undertaking any efforts to boost participation? Because you know, Lee Summit High School had about 80 scholars participating, North had about 50, and then West had about 20. That's my first question.
Thank you, Board Member Clark. And we will be happy to provide you the information for this year and upcoming Friday update. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kephart to talk about efforts to recruit students for the program.
So this item is actually for our middle schools. You had approved the AVID for high schools earlier in the year. And so this is an addition for middle schools. So not just are we adding to our enrollment at our high school and recruiting high school students, but this allows our AVID program to begin in our middle schools as well.
Right. I was focused on that other, the other participation piece, and clearly an expansion to middle school. I think, I mean, obviously, I said I was supportive of that, but thank you.
Ryan?
This is kind of a follow-up to a question that we had in the packet on the NWEA. Did we get any response regarding what that contract is in regards to cancellation and stuff like that? I know that we had reached out, so I was just doing a follow-up.
Yes, we did. So there is an opportunity for us to do some of that online and to do some online training once we realize if we're not going to do that in-person training. NWEA, as you spoke earlier, will be critical for us as we look at curriculum recovery, and we can see our students and what skills they are missing, and be able to help with that curriculum recovery very early. So we do want to be able to have that training for our students, or for our teachers, whether that be virtual or in-person, as we start the year.
Thank you. And then one other question here, and this is a general question because of the number of contracts that are being approved not only last month, this month, and probably next month. Are the contracts that we're approving getting anything built into them in regards to some of the cancellations that could potentially happen, especially if they happen, for example, mid-year? Like if we've started the school year, and for some reason, something would happen where we would have to stop and restart and that kind of thing, are those kinds of provisions being built into the contract? Or is it just, are those contracts already naturally have those kinds of things in them?
So I can tell you, we've been working through some professional development issues, speakers not wanting to come to district due to the mass gatherings and numbers. So currently, some of our contracts do have that language incorporated. Happy to ask Krista Batagliff, that's standard language we're incorporating moving forward.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, I'm just curious.
Okay, I think Jackie has a question, then we'll go to Kim.
All right. 9.07, the Empathia Program, obviously mentioned the Insurance and Benefits Committee participation. And it's just great that we can have this program, the benefit for our employees. But also, it is a local access program, and that's one of the key elements of that particular program. So that's terrific. And then the next item was 9.11, which of course is the NWEA contract that Ryan has just mentioned. And that was something that I was in agreement with him on, that we need to have the consideration for every one of these contracts going forward for, I'm going to call it an out clause or a modification clause due to these kinds of circumstances. So I want to just reinforce the need to look at that as we move forward. Thank you.
Kim?
More of a comment. I think if you look at many of the items in... I think if you look at many of the items in this particular, in, in the nines this time, our audience and, and our teachers out there need to be really well aware of the fact that we have so many programs that we're approving tonight. And some of these are renewals. And, and then the Caring School Community Pilot Program is a new one. But these are all items. The Avid Program, the BIST Program, which has been going on for over 20 years in our school district. The Caring School Communities, which is a pilot. The NWEA Testing, which helps us keep track of how well our kids are doing on a regular basis. All of these are ways that our district helps our students to become successful and tracks their, and tracks their progress and, and in many different ways. So, and I mean, I personally visited the Avid classes this year, at least Summit North, and they were so impressive. And I think if students could see a videotape or get, you know, hear some interviews with some of the kids in those classes about what they like best about Avid and what it's done for them, just them socially and emotionally, and their confidence level and their direction in life because of the guest speakers who come into the room. I think that we'd have a lot more kids signing up for Avid. I really do. Because those, it's, it's a very impressive program. And the instructors that work with those kids, they're, she's right in, she was right in there with them. I mean, and, and you could tell, there was a bond there. So I'm just super impressed with, with how much our district does to help our individual students to try to succeed. And you know, and if there's a student who's struggling, I think our educators do the best they can to find some way somehow to make it happen for them.
That's great. Joe?
He's either waving to me or?
Yeah, responding to the question, I've actually been working with Krista on some standard language.
Okay.
To the question on cancellation. As, as we were talking about that, that, that we've already been looking at that and putting some standard language in because a lot of the contracts have different language in them. And we realize sometimes it's broad enough to cover something we're going through now, sometimes it's not. So we're trying to standardize that language. We're already on top of that.
Thank you, Joe.
Nice look. Joe, sorry to ask, I assume that goes back to contracts that were approved last month? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm just curious, if programs we're rolling out are continuing from last year to this year? One-on-one groups?
I don't know if it got into the contracts last month because I'm thinking we were looking at this issue about a month ago. But I know we, we tried to develop some, some standard language that would be broad enough. Sometimes it depends. Sometimes you want to be on the other side of that issue too, depending on the contract. You don't want to have that cancellation invoked on you, so. But we've been consulting with her. I, I don't know specific contract by contract because we don't review every contract that comes before you ahead of time. We just tried to work in some standard language to put into the terms and conditions that would apply. And I don't know exactly when she started implementing that on the contracts.
Okay. Thanks.
Great. If there's no other questions, we have a motion in a second. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you. We move on down to 10.01, which is the Personnel Report, which is always fun, usually. I do need to motion.
I move to approve the personnel transactions as presented and contracts issued.
Second. Okay. Do we have any questions? And then I think Dr. Del Sim will.
Can you just clarify, Dr. Del Sim, the strike that's in our personnel report of what that is in reference to? The one, the personnel that has a strike in red through?
He resigned. He resigned. He resigned. He's later law father.
Oh, it doubles, doubles up, okay. Okay, you don't even have to answer now. See, there you go.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to say, our, I think our administrators have been really busy, probably doing Zoom interviews because our, our hiring, this time of year, it's hiring season. And I don't know if you have a number for how many people we've hired in the last month or so far, but it seems quite, quite a good list.
I got it, yeah. I don't have a total number, Kim, for you that we've hired, but they have been busy. And you know, the board graciously approved Spark Hire for us, which is a new interview platform that everyone has really enjoyed using along with Zoom and Google Hangout. And it was just serendipitous, given the time we're in, that we have those platforms to continue our hiring during this time. We haven't slowed down at all.
And could I, could I ask you? I know that, that some folks will be asking in the near future. Has, how is our minority hiring been going this year? Have we increased in our minority hiring?
I did put that in the update. We don't have total numbers because actually we've had to stall on our onboarding due to our closure. We haven't been able to fingerprint, of course, and then process through some of our paperwork. But we will be getting an update to all of you regarding that.
Great. Thank you. All right, no other questions? We have a motion in a second, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Del Sim, do you have any special announcements that you'd like to make tonight?
You will see in your update that there was a recommendation for two assistant principals moving forward. And Dr. Kephart, I don't know if you want to add anything to that recommendation this, or announce what buildings they'll be at joining us?
So I think this is kind of exciting because I, we probably have some additional viewership because the school buildings don't know who their, who their new hires are yet. And that's normally not how we do things, but it is for this board meeting. So I would like to announce we have a split position with Woodland Elementary and Sunset Valley. And that will be Amy Westacott. Amy is a employee of us currently. She is a PE at Woodland, but has been a teacher, first grade and fourth grade at Woodland. So we are excited about Amy joining the elementary team. And then our second AP is between Westview and Longview Farm. And we would like to introduce Cherie Swerengen. And she will be joining us from Center School District where she will be a, well, she was going to be, a middle school instructional teacher, but has been an elementary teacher in their district for seven years. So we are glad that she is joining us for the district as well. So congratulations to all four of those buildings and our two new administrators.
That's fun.
And I might just jump in and say, thank you for asking that, Dr. Miller, because that just illustrates how academic services and human resources share in the hiring process, to Kim's point, and celebrates that they have been actively working because we just got all of that in and recommended to you today.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
I did pop my button real quick. I, I, this is probably a little out of term, but I would, I saw resonate, or retirement down there. And Donna Herman, who was at, back in 1992, opened Campbell along with several. I think she's the last front office person that was left in, at Campbell, who is retired. Was here at, at Central Office and then came over and started at with 835 students and 45 staff members. And I don't know what the exact numbers are today, but I know, I just saw that. And, and that's, I just want to shout out to her for all her hard work. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Dennis. All right. We decided not to have any presentations, but we had three written reports. One on the Early Childhood Center Extended School Year Parents as Teachers Annual Program. And then we also had one on federal programs, annual programs evaluation, and the ever-popular facilities and maintenance project update. Did anybody have any questions on those? Kim.
Yes. First of all, on the Early Childhood Center and Parents as Teachers Report, I just wanted to say thank you, folks, for your service for our little list of most needy learners. To Carrie Bame and Jeannie Cook and you and your staff. You all do amazing work for getting our pre-K kiddos ready to begin their kindergarten career in school. I enjoyed going over to Great Beginnings during the past year to be a guest reader for the kiddos. They're very enthusiastic and that is always fun to interact with those kids over there. And I appreciate the staff asking for me to be a mystery reader. That was a lot of fun. Also, on the federal programs evaluation, read through every single word of that. Is it over $2 million that we get in federal aid that I saw in that report? And Dr. Kephart, it was very extensive report. And it was filled with excellent information regarding our title programs. And what struck me when I read that report was all of the interventions and services that are offered to our students who are struggling in many areas because of the, the title funding that we receive. I don't think people understand how much, you know, that that means to our district, you know? And if we didn't have that, what we wouldn't be able to do for kids. So I mean, I know the federal government, the amount of money that the federal government contributes to our education of our kids is the least amount in the pot. But it, it's still significant and it still counts for a lot when it comes to the programs for our kids. And I just hope that some folks in the viewing audience, if you'll click into our, you know, our exciting board agenda and click on that report, you can read through that report and see exactly where all that money is going. So you'll know some of the good things that our district is able to do because of those federal programs and that title money to support our students. So that's all I wanted to say about that. Thanks.
We will go to Jackie and then Judy.
Thank you. And, and this is for 12.01, the Early Childhood Center Report. And my, my thoughts to Kim and Andrea and just to let them know, the terrific report. And it is amazing what is accomplished for the kids at the, all of, all of the programs. And I'm hoping, hopeful that I will be able to get over there once it's safe to do so, to see some of this in action at post-COVID or whatever you want to say. And then on 12.02, it's more of an observation. You know, we, we have a lot of federal support for the district. And in the, the CARES Act, there's a lot of money flowing to the state. And there's opportunities for various levels of government to make claims for some of those revenues based on COVID's impact. And that's probably a worthwhile exercise to determine if any of, particularly the title programs, might be eligible or are somehow affected by COVID that maybe some of those sorts of funds could be requested at the very least. That's all I have. Thank you.
Judy.
I just had a couple of comments on 12.01, on early childhood. Great report. And I think one of the things that was most meaningful in that report to me was some of the parent comments from the surveys that were done. And I think what that demonstrates is the need for those services for our youngest learners in the district. So I, I really appreciated that part of that report. And it just kind of struck me as very, how, how important it is. And then on the federal programs reports, I do appreciate the information that's, was submitted back in terms of the questions that I'd asked previously. But I think the one thing that's really important, along with what Kim said, was that a lot of these federal dollars though are supplemental to the, to the base and can't replace what the district spends. And I do think that's another part of that federal funding that is not widely known by, you know, our, our community at large. And so I think that's another very important piece of that federal funding is that for, for services above and beyond what, what our students receive. So those are really the only two comments that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike and then Ryan.
I'll jump on the Great Beginnings bandwagon here a little bit. Been a partner in education with that group for a number of years. Starting with the palatial structure they had there at Miller Park, you know, the building. And then to see the community come together and build the, the physical building that they're in today was a fantastic effort by the community headed up by a number of folks, two families that, that go deep into the city. But to really hearken back to their early start. And you get three people in a room, namely Judy Nolan, Ms. Rose, and Ms. White. And those three will tell you how important that Early Childhood Center work is. And those, those, those three are pioneers with what the school district has done at that level. And then to hand the baton off to a number of principals and, and now Carrie Bame, of course, and her team. They're a tremendous example of a, a site-based group that moves mountains. And it's, it is phenomenal. And Kim, you said you've been over there. I've been over there a number of times, obviously. But I, 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 I hope that folks dig into the bond issue because if they are able to expand into the building at, at Prairie View North, I guess we're calling it, that will just then continue to propel the work that they do. So, you know, we've talked about Lee Summit High School. We've talked about some of the other areas in the middle school and that. But, oh my goodness, ages two, three, four, five, or three, four, five in there, that can be early, yeah, early age impacted is, is phenomenal. So I hope, I hope we as a community dig into that bond issue and see what can happen at Prairie View for early education as much as anything else. And, and then continue to support Carrie and that group. They, from start to finish, from the classroom to the Jeff City State Capitol, even a national effort, they are head and shoulders of many. So kudos to them. A great report.
Thank you. Ryan?
Yes. Yes, yes, yes to what Mike says. So obviously having had a kid go through Great Beginnings, yes, 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 and yes. My question is, I, I kind of do have a question related to, to that facilities. And, and Mike actually kind of started with it there on Prairie View and the early elementary, I mean, the early childhood. So I know during the closure that district employees and Gould Evans and everybody has continued to work on our bond projects and stuff like that. I'm sure that you are well-versed in Zoom like everyone else during this. I was wondering, Kyle, can you provide us with an update around where those? We got a real high-level thing right there, obviously, in the facilities update. But can you give us an update on that design process? Where we stand, especially on the large projects that I think have consumed a lot of people's thoughts here in terms of Mason, Lee Summit, Prairie View, the additions of, at the middle schools and the, and the new building and stuff? And just kind of tell us where we're at with those designs and stuff?
Sure, I'd be glad to. First of all, before I start talking about schedule though, sometimes I, I, I talk in realities too much. And I just want to make sure everyone understands that we're not being presumptive and, and schedules are all, you know, 100% pending a successful election. And so, but our design and construction teams, their job is to lay a course that sets us up for success. And so that's what they've done and setting the schedules. And so just running down through the projects, the Lee Summit High School project, we will be finishing up the design, the whole design development sometime this summer. Work through construction documents in the fall. And we would anticipate bringing a contract to the board for a ward probably around December. So that would lead- um, probably around December. Um, so that would lead us to starting construction in January of '21. And that project would take approximately 30 months, so about two and a half years. Um, not so much about the, the volume of construction, it's just more about the phasing of the work. Um, we would start working, um, early on with the new addition, and then would move through phases of the building, moving kids into some mobile classrooms at different times, a month or two at a time, and working our way around the building. So we're still, right now, working through the phasing plan on how that would all, all fall in place. So that's Lee Summit High. The middle school project, um, we are just finishing up, um, here in the next few weeks, really, with design development. We have had, uh, dozens of meetings with teachers and staff, and even had a couple today, um, on different subject areas of that building, refining the design. Um, so the middle school project, they'll start construction documents, um, here this summer. Um, we will look to bid the project, um, around a September timeframe, start construction in October. Um, that project has a really tight, um, timeframe to get it built and open for the summer of '22. So we may be looking for an early bid package that would start some site, site work a month early, maybe in that September time range. So the middle school renovations, um, we have purposely waited on those projects, um, a little bit, until we've gotten through the design of the middle school, because we want, um, all of that great work with the teaching staff, and even the visioning from the kids that we had early on. We want that to be able to inform us, um, the designs and some of the work we'll be able to do, especially in the larger project at Pleasantly Middle School. And so we've just gone through the very beginning part of the middle school renovation projects. Um, we'll kick up design, um, and get a lot more feedback when school starts, work on that in the first semester. And we'll look to start construction next spring with those projects completing in the summer of '22 also. So we'll be ready for all the sixth grade transition during the, uh, '22, '23 school year. So the Mason project, uh, that's gonna be our first project out of the chute, pending successful election. Um, we are finished with the design development. They're furiously working on design drawings. Um, the biggest challenge with Mason is that if we move forward with this project, the new addition happens right on top of the electrical service to the building. So this summer, um, we have an early bid package that, that is out, that we would award, um, in June with the bond issue that just relocates the electrical service to the building. Um, something about having that electricity the first day of school is a little bit important. So, um, so we would move that, and then they would start construction on the rest of the building, um, in September. So what Mason looks like, we've got a big addition proposed on the east side of the building. Um, they would start that first. We would start in September of '20, work on that for a year, finish that up next summer. Then next summer would be a huge renovation year. They would get as much done as they can, and get probably two-thirds to three-fourths of the, the renovated part of the building done next summer. Um, everybody could move into their new space, and then we would have a final renovation phase that would happen in the fall of '21. And then we would finish up the project. We don't know exactly yet. We're gonna try to get it done, um, sometime mid-school year in that '21, '22 school year. So that's the Mason project. Um, and then Early Childhood. The Early Childhood Project, we have gone through visioning. We've had a number of meetings with staff. Um, and as you guys mentioned in the, just with the report tonight, some of the most exciting meetings that we've been involved with, not only just the energy that the staff and those programs bring to the team, but, um, just the nature of those programs. And so we're looking forward to furthering the design. Um, but that project, of course, is contingent on sixth graders moving out. So we've really got another year to, um, let that project work. Um, we've been letting Hollis and Miller spend their effort on Mason, and then they'll begin working on Prairie View next year. We'll get that going. And that's gonna be a later project. We're still trying to figure out a way to get that accelerated, but getting the sixth graders out of Prairie View is a, um, really important part, part of making that project happen. So that's the 30,000-foot speech. Thank you for axing. And, uh, we're excited, and we'll wait a couple of weeks to see how it goes.
Kim?
Well, I just wanted to say, I, I think from, just from listening to Kyle's, all of Kyle's detail on these projects, um, how very important it is for us to get out there and vote. Um, and that hopefully our, our citizens understand the urgency and the need that's out there behind all of these projects. Um, each one of them has its own, um, significance to certain groups of people in this district. And I would say that, um, with the safety, uh, with the safety provisions in this bond issue and others, that it'll, it'll virtually touch every, every child in this district in some way or another, at some point in his or her career in school, in Lee Summit. So I, I hope our, I hope our residents understand how truly important it is for us to get out to the polls on June the second vote. Thank you.
Well said. Kim?
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, President Don. I know you always give me the eye of, what is he gonna say? But I'll keep it quiet.
It actually says attorney, and that's...
Oh, good. A bill of, these hours are billable then, I think.
My eyes on that. So, Mike?
No, I just, it's not on the agenda tonight, but I do wanna, I do want to, take my hat off to Katie Bergen. I think that our public relations and media and information that's been out has been outstanding. And thank you for the report. Uh, that was in the packet. And I think getting folks synchronized with not just the COVID issue and the, and the, and the logistics of that, but also then integrating information on the bond issue has been fantastic. So that's all. Thank you.
Yes. Great job, Katie. All right. Any other questions, concerns? I will adjourn the meeting. Jaren? Thank you. Thank you all.